Good evening. The regular meeting on the Richmond Board of Education will come to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sandy, please read our mission statement and take role.
At Richmond Community Schools, we provide a quality education that empowers students to be successful in a global community. Candace?
Here.
Deb?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
Danielle?
Here.
Margaret?
Here.
And Angela did say that she was going to be about 10 minutes late. So I guess she's late with notice. And I am here, so we do have work.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda with one amendment due to how lengthy our meeting is going to be. I'd like to move item number 11, Student Board Representative Report, up to a new number seven.
We're going to slide everything down?
Yep.
It's number 12, though. The student board or education representative report is 12.
Oh, I'm sorry, 12, thank you. We'll move 12 and make it seven.
Any support?
Support.
I'm sorry, Danielle?
Yeah.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I vote aye, motion carries. Looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Support. Thank you. Now, Mr. Wormsley.
I'll start with the personnel report. I'll turn it over to Jamie Thiel. I'll give one presentation. Brennan Dolan, basketball coach, freshman at the high school. We have one new hire, Dante Rofalini, a long-term substitute. We had several notes of appointments. We have Kyria Adal-Akeem as an after-school tutor. Will Lee, Ryan Ballard, high school freshman player, basketball coach. Nick Berg, middle school wrestling coach. Lori Caposo, high school assistant cook. She was formerly in the floater position. Jennifer Dorsey, after-school tutor at Will Lee. Robert LaGroy, after-school tutor at Lee. Steve Pedri, after-school tutor at Lee. Ursula Metzhooner, after-school tutor at Lee. And that's it. There were no errors brought to my attention regarding the regular meeting minutes from the October 23 board meeting. Claims and counts, there were two questions. I emailed the board today, but the questions were from board member Tello regarding American Athletics. There was a check for 55698 for $15,286 for bleacher repair service. I also emailed the board a copy of the bleacher report, something we do annually for the inspection of bleachers. These are the exterior bleachers, home bleachers, visitors, baseball, softball, and all the repairs. And let's bring them up to speak code. And the other is check number 55650, which is for Yellow Folder, which is an online service that houses our current and former employees' personnel files. And I don't, Tammy, I don't believe you received any other questions?
I did not receive any other questions.
That concludes our report.
Anyone have any questions?
Yeah, I was just wondering. So I think that's awesome seeing all those after-school tutors for Willie Elementary. I was wondering, do all the buildings have those or?
Yeah, each building has an allocation. So you'll see in the upcoming, as they finalize those tutor postings in those buildings.
Okay.
But every building will have tutoring in some fashion or targeted instruction helper kids.
Okay. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I vote aye, motion carries. We are now going to do our student report.
Starting off the elementary school, the elementary has seen reduction in all assesses and all grade levels for the month of October for years past. We have received abundance of positive feedback regarding the snow lane. They can chop off much smoother. And the gingerbread house night being planned, it's going to be a fun way for families to come and enjoy an activity with their child during school. Coming from the middle school, on Tuesday, November 7th, our S teachers participated in professional development day. The majority of the sessions were by teachers. We reviewed special education rules and laws, the law of first study child process. We learned about accelerated reading, get a math and writing check-in, and finished the day analyzing our EBSUP data to help drive parents' instruction. It was a very productive day. On November 10th, Richmond Middle School hosted the annual Veterans Day community seminar. It was a wonderful experience for all. The Richmond VFD honor guard started us off by presenting the colors, the brand, the band inquires, rendition of the Star Spangled Banner was amazing. Mr. Paul Oxby explained how the Army made him the band days today. Eighth graders Jayden Gutierrez and crew vice then read essays about how their veteran dads are the Michigan heroes. And quotes of Ballard presented several local veterans with a call as to thank you for their service in the grateful country. It was such a special day for the school. Our winter sports are now underway with girls' basketball and wrestling starting up. We're also excited to watch a very, very new after-school club this week, Armless Delta Chess Club. We're very happy to offer this for our students. In the high school, my career quest is taking place tomorrow, November 14th. Forty students will be traveling to the Noire Suburban Showcase for a career fair of over 200 industry leading companies. Students in 10th through 12th grade will be attending. The high school has awarded a $2,500 fast food completion challenge grant. The purpose of this grant is to provide money to help support for the fast food process and to also promote ASLA completion goals and monitor them regularly, to build shares, ownership, establish partnership, and spread awareness. Our goal is to continue to improve honor results from the spring of last year, which was an 11% increase from the 2021-2022 school year. Twenty students will be invited to the Columbia Community College Auto Scheme Days on December 7th, who will be participating in the automotive design and manufacturing hands-on breakout sessions. They'll have lunch on campus. More information will be shared with their students based on the EDP results. Friday, the high school is performing a play on this weekend on Friday at 7:00 p.m., Saturday at 7:00 p.m., and Sunday at 2:00 p.m. Hope everyone can come out and see our students perform. In the high school, now that fall sports have wrapped up, winter sports are starting up. Boys' basketball trials have started today. Girls' basketball will start their trials next week. Wrestling has wrapped up. Conditioning will start on the mat today. Cheer has wrapped up trials in the after-year season. Powerlifting has kicked off, and they're working this way.
Thank you. Any questions for Connie? Okay, next item on our agenda. I'm looking for a motion to go into closed session for a discipline reinstatement hearing.
For students of Section 8B of the Michigan Open Meetings Act, and upon the request of the student's parent and or guardian, I move this Board of Education to go into a closed session for the purpose of conducting a hearing to consider the, is it discipline? Discipline reinstatement, reinstatement of a student's identity as known as 0911234. Support.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I vote aye, motion carries. We will be moving into the room.
Door.
Door one.
For students of Section 8B of the Michigan Open Meetings Act, I move the Board to close session to consider the discipline of student 111323.
Do I have support?
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I vote aye, motion carries. We're going back to the same room. Okay, we're going to go back in open session at 8:45. Okay, I'm looking for a motion to go into closed session.
For students of Section 8A of the Michigan Open Meetings Act, and upon the request of the employee, I move that the board of education go into closed session for the purpose of conducting a hearing to consider the dismissal, suspension, or disciplining of an employee whose identity is known as employee 11323.
Do I have support? Thank you, Mary. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I vote aye, motion carries. We will be meeting in room 201. Again?
Yep.
201. Next item on our agenda. We're starting with our presentations. We're going to have our fiscal year 2023 audit.
Hello, everyone. Thank you. So, okay, you can see it over there. I just wanted to make sure. Thank you for having me tonight. I will try to go through this quick and hit the highlights for you. It was filed on time. Your deadline was November 1st, so you hit all your markers for everything. As I go through it, I always like to mention, because I get here once a year, that if you guys have questions or things that come up during the year, I say I'm your auditor all year, not just at the November meeting. So if things happen, you can contact me, or Jordan is the lead auditor, at any time during the year. So quickly, to go over responsibilities for each thing. The district's responsible for all your numbers, everything from day to day, your internal controls, all that environment. And that's where we start the audit, is looking at those internal control environment, looking at how things are processed to make sure everything's going correctly. And then the auditor really comes on to give you a third-party independent look at that, to see if your financial processes and your statements are reported correctly. So you're really getting that third-party look. Some people think kind of the audit comes out and changes things and makes adjustments, but those items should all be done ahead of time. Overall, your audit result, you did receive a clean opinion. It's called an unmodified opinion. The main part of this is kind of the end statement, where it says it's free from material misstatement. How I consider that is that we've tested everything to a low enough level to be able to say that the board, a parent, a third-party user, the financials, would not consider your finances differently from anything we could have possibly missed. We evaluate everything to a low enough level to be able to say that. Continuing on audit results, you had no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies, so overall, no findings on your financial statements. We also do a single audit over your federal dollars, which have been influx in the last few years with all the ESTER funding and gear funding. We also had no material weaknesses, no findings, no material noncompliance, noted over your federal dollars, and we audited the education stabilization funds, which are ESTER as well. Audit procedures, I won't read all these to you, but the biggest thing is, as I mentioned, we start with the internal controls, looking to make sure you have the right checks and balances, segregation of duties, proper monitoring, things of that nature. And we also always throw in unpredictability every year. This year, we did more of an in-depth look at your IT policies, procedures. We did walkthroughs on your IT department and the cybersecurity issues. So we kind of did an overhaul of that IT security. This year, we also, every year, they like to adopt a new standard to make Tammy's life more difficult and keep the employee. But this year was subscription-based information technology arrangements. So they're called SPITAS. There was a lot of information out about it. And I always say it was a lot of work for a little bit of change. So it didn't affect anything too much. They basically are doing away with like short-term contracts and everything has to be a long-term asset. You've earned IT arrangements now.
Can I interject here?
Yeah, absolutely.
This would be something like if we got into a copier lease, where we're paying payments over years, we have to assume all the costs. There's a way of accounting for it. We don't have those leases, you know, like a copier. We bought them outright. That would be one example of.
Yeah, so that was what happened, yes, last year. So this follows the exact same rules, only it's with emailing Zoom licenses now. Or the big thing in schools, obviously, is your like curriculum, if you're doing testing and things. But if the contract's a year, there's a lot of things that don't apply. So you have to pull all these contracts and agreements to look to see if they apply. But if there was a long-term one, you would have to book it like an asset, just like you said. Governance letter, so in your audit, and I should have mentioned this at the beginning, but you guys have two documents in front of you. One is the single audit, that's the smaller one, and the other one's the large audit. So, and this is kind of a highlight reel of those items. But in the back of your larger document, which is your actual financial statement audit, is the governance letter. That letter is to management and the board. It has most of the information in there, some accounting junk in, but it does give you a few items that are important to note. It goes over the risk of the audit. It goes over some highlights we'll have here. It has any comments or things like that would be included in there as well. In that letter, it states some required communication from the auditor, being that there was no disagreements with management during the audit, no difficulties, and no significant audit adjustments. I would say difficulty would be like if we couldn't get information, if information was lost or something of that nature, we would put that in there. And also, by the time we began fieldwork, things were adjusted properly. We did have one comment for noncompliance, and this isn't considered material, so we consider it a management comment, but it's net cash resources for the food service fund. So it's also called excess fund balance. So if your food service fund has a fund balance of more than three months' cash needs for your food service department, that's not allowed. You have to have a spend-down policy with Michigan Department of Education. And it's actually, I would say, 75% or more of my schools this year had this issue. So you had a higher reimbursement rate, where students were getting hot lunches, just kind of happening, and supply chain issues. So with all of that combined, many, many schools have this going on. And as long as you spend it within the food service fund, you're not going to get it taken back or anything like that.
Do you have to spend it within a certain period of time?
Nope, they just want, they give you a year, but they keep extending it. So it's kind of a year spend-down plan, but they keep extending it as long as you're working with them. The next couple slides are snippets directly from your audit. This is your balance sheet over your governmental funds. This is of June 30th, so that's the kind of accrue, we accrue back to June 30th. Total assets for the district were $10.3 million. You have quite a few major funds this year. You had the general fund, debt fund, capital projects fund, and the 2020 capital project fund. All is major. And then non-major is everything else included in that smaller column. For food service, student activities, and the smaller 2022 capital project fund. The flip side to that balance sheet is your liabilities, deferred inflows, and fund balance. Total liabilities at $3 million. Deferred inflows, that is $80,000, and that was due to the 60-day rule. So we can't recognize revenue that was received past 60 days in governmental accounting for your fund level statements. And then total fund balance for all funds was $7.2 million. And I like to point out, which you guys all know, but when you do, you're looking at your fund balance, $3 million of that was general fund. And then everything else is really either restricted or committed for a specific purpose, as you can only use capital projects for those funds, food service for those funds. Next is the budget to actual comparison for, this is only general fund. You had final budget, budgeted for an increase of $24,000, and you actually had an increase of $1.3 million. And you can see your differences there. Your expenditures were under budget, which is what you need to see, have to see. That's a requirement by the state law, that those have to be under budget. But overall, you had an increase of 1.3.
I'd like to interject here again. If you recall, I sent the board an email a couple weeks ago before the preliminary of that 1.3 less expenditures. If you think about from last year, the staff that left, we had vacancies until we filled them. We had $800,000 in salaries that were expected to be expended but weren't. And when you add the FICA retirement benefits with it, that's why our expenditures was significantly dropped. All of those expenses were rolled over into this year, expecting to fill every single one of those positions that was not filled at the time of last year.
The next couple slides are pie graphs to show you. This is general fund again, this is only, this one's revenue, and then there's two on the expense side. Overall, federal did go up a little bit to 9% with all those ESTER fundings. Last few years, federal's increased a little bit. But overall, state and local is about 86%, which is your fund balance, or not fund balance, sorry, foundation allowance and some other restricted state grants. So that's the majority there. The next one, expenditures, total supporting services and instruction. Those two combined is about 93%. And then everything else is about 7% there. And this, I noticed sitting there that it has a typo, but this is 2023. And so for total, all your expenditures for general fund, salaries and employee benefits together is about 78%. Purchased service is also mostly people, so your total people cost is about 89%. And as you said, with FICA and retirement, with all those things added together, doing that cost, your employee benefits is about 77 cents on the dollar for salaries. So if you just think about it that way, how much is spent on benefits with all benefits? So all benefits together. Which kind of plays into this slide. We had this in here, really some scans from 60 and 75 came out when you were reporting the net pension liability and that OPAP liability. But this is the last 10 years of the mincer's rate, so the retirement pension rate. And it's at 40, almost 45%. That blue line is the total amount that's actually put in your expenses for the amount of retirement for each dollar salary, 50 cents is going into retirement. The next slide is a trend of your enrollment. I thought this one was kind of interesting. So a 10-year trend from 2014 to 2023. Overall, very consistent for the last 10 years, but you did get over. The 2014 was the highest until 2023. You surpassed that previous enrollment. And then with, where the revenue's coming from, and this is the foundation allowance for the same 10 years. And overall, you can see the last few years, there's been a hike. But if you calculated it out for the last 10 years, it's been a average of about a 3% increase. But that hasn't really happened until the last few years, when you've gotten those extra bumps. But it's only been about a 3% per year. The next slide is your general fund, fund balance. So for the same 10 years, 2014 to 2023, you can see 21, 22, and 23 have moved up for the last three years. You've increased your fund balance. And with that, these are the percentages that the state uses most often to look at. So 2022 fund balance as a percentage of unrestricted revenues was about 12%. As fund balance as a percentage of expenditures, it was about 9.4%. That's 2022, 2023, that moved up to almost 15% for expenditures, and unrestricted revenue was at 19%. The state uses the unrestricted revenue percentage to look at your, are you in financial distress? And if that gets close to 5%, they start getting other reporting and things from the district. You put that into days, it's about 54 days of expenditures that you have. And I kind of flew through that, but if you have any questions, I'm happy to take them. But overall, a clean audit. I know that last year and this year, there's just been a lot of stuff going on, a lot of new grants. People, CPOs and new grants have, I mean, the ESTER grants got up to, I don't even know what it is. They really had, there were small ones, little ones, lots. Everyone had a different agreement. There's been a lot of things going on. So to have a clean audit, many of them had findings, so that's real good news. And they did a great job for us, and Jordan said everything was great as well. So I'm happy to take any questions, so.
I would just like to thank Tammy and her team. If you think about this in perspective, you have 20-plus million dollars in revenue expenses you're monitoring. You add on top of the last three years, you're dealing with all the federal grants that we've gotten through COVID, which has been millions. And then you add on top of that in the last three years, $38.7 million in a bond that we've had to manage. All of it coming out to the T. And having an audit for 10 years straight at this level is just outstanding. So thank you.
Anyone have any questions? I just want to say thank you and thank you for staying.
You have no problem.
Thank you.
Thank you, you guys. Thanks for your time.
Okay, next item on our agenda is our POC overnight extended trip request to Europe.
All right, Ms. Christensen, Miss David.
Well, hello, everyone. My name is Mrs. Christensen. I teach CTE business here at the high school. I've been here since January. So what was it, Mr. Berg went over to the middle school? And prior to teaching, just to give you a little real quick, I've been a travel agent for years. So I'm pretty abreast in everything when it comes to the travel industry, regulations, flights, hotels, accommodations, attractions. So if you did not see this PowerPoint presentation, the board, we're going to go through it. I'll try to go through it a little quicker than norm. But what we're presenting is an 11-day trip, 2025. So we have a little bit of time here, but we want students to prepare and fundraise and be able to prepare for the trip. So some of the things we're going to look at, I kind of already did this myself, but we're going to look at the travel partner we're going to use, the preferred supplier, EF Tour Company. We're going to also talk about safety and support, because that's the number one concern for our students and our staff that will be going. Our itinerary, what's included in the package. And then a little bit about the price and how do we pull what we're going to do. That's me. Today I travel. So the tour company that we're using is a preferred vendor. The preferred vendor has been a business for 60 years, and they've been doing these student-run trips for quite some time. Since they run them on a daily basis around the globe, they have over 50 countries. They have EF representatives in. So it definitely helps having locals that actually work for the company in the destinations that we're traveling to. And if we're going to go so far, this can be accredited just for our school if we want our students to get some type of credit. But we really haven't gotten that far in the conversation. But if they want to, they definitely can get some form of credit, as well as college credit, and it works good for college essays. So here's our safety partners. Since they use all of the local vendors in sight, we'll go through the itinerary in a minute. But all of the local vendors on site are preferred suppliers on site in our destinations. They do have an incident response team at every location that we will be traveling to. They do look at all the health requirements, if there's any vaccines with the countries we're going to, we do not need that. And they do have a 24/7 tour guide that will be with us on the trip if students do enroll in the opportunity. So that's great. There's a few other things that you can look at as the board, but this gets a little further down the road into the technical and depends how many students we get interested in it. They're able to write a personalized learning guide and take that with them in regards to diversity and inclusion today. Those are two big topics in business. They'll be able to write that learning guide. They could possibly, as I said, get high school or college credit. And for all the students right now, they're asking me all the time for college essay help. This will help them with college essay help, especially experiencing the globe. This will help them with college essay help, especially experiencing the globe. Here's our itinerary. This is the fun stuff, which everyone's been looking at. It's three days in each destination, three nights, I should say. Our first night will be on board the aircraft because it is an overnight flight. And then we'll have three nights in Paris. We will take the tunnel to London. And then we'll have three nights in London. And then we'll take the Ural Star to Edinburgh for another three nights. To break it down, Paris, you can kind of see the detailed itinerary. I know it's a little harder up here, but what we're doing day by day and the attractions we're visiting. If you'd like, I can go through them all. But if not, that's kind of just a sample of what our day would look like. The shepherds as well as the students or any adults that are interested in traveling on the trip. I did include in the price, the price is the biggest thing, but we thought Versailles was definitely something that we wanted to see while in Paris. So that is an add-on. So that is one of the attractions that we will be seeing while we are in France. Here's our London itinerary, broken down in days six, seven, and eight, what we will be doing. But we did do an add-on here too as well. But some of the key highlights and attractions, of course, is Buckingham Palace, the Parliament, Big Ben, are just to name a few. And we do have an opportunity that is included to go to the theater one night in London. And then we're adding on the Windsor Castle because we thought that was important in our, in our first meeting we had about it. So that attraction ticket is included in the package, we just completed total tour. Next, we, this was an added addition. The only thing with this added addition, if I had to say any downfall, is we will miss two days of school. So students will miss two days of school with this added addition. But we feel that we're that far. It's a great experience for our students to get into Scotland. So going into Edinburgh, we'll be there days nine, ten, and eleven. And we're going to have the opportunity to visit some castles, the Edinburgh Castle being one. And sometimes some of the tour companies, you just look at it, we actually want to get in it. So we added on the attraction ticket to get actually into the castle. And here's the tour we added on in Scotland, the sector of Scotland. So it was included. That's the biggest thing, what parents are going to really look at. I will use the same slide presentation for my parents when they come for an informative meeting if this gets approved. It includes everyone's round-trip airfare. It includes their hotel accommodations for the nine nights in three different destinations. It includes two meals a day, breakfast and dinner. We'll have a tour guide with us. I am not the tour guide, it's a representative from EF Tours will be with us twenty-four-seven. All of our transportation, so planes, trains, and buses will be included. We'll have a local guide with us at all times. Our sightseeing tours and attractions, admission into those additional attractions that we put on this slide presentation. What the parents or families will have to pay for above and beyond is to travel into Europe, you do need a passport. So students will need a valid passport and we'll help them with that passport application process if they do not have one. Tipping for guides and possible bus drivers. So the tips are not included as well as lunches. As I said, two meals a day are included. But I know some people in the room right now have sons or daughters that went on these trips. And they said their suitcases were packed with coronavirus and their own personal snacks and so on and so forth. So those are things we'll talk about on an individual level with the individuals who really want to go on the trip. And booking with confidence is something that a lot of parents, they know, gosh, I'm just throwing my kid out to Europe. You know, we have to work with a little bit of confidence. The package includes a peace of mind program. So gosh, you're bid COVID three-point-oh strikes, I don't even know what they're going to call it. If that ends up striking, they will, of course, possibly hold the funds, but let us go to later date. Even if the student graduates, they can go on a later date. So that's a big red flag to a lot of individuals, like, you know, we never know what's going to happen in our economy. So if that does, the monies are protected. But if parents want to protect even further, there's additional insurance. And that will cover you if there's a trip cancellation or something happens to the student's bags. They can purchase that above and beyond the package prices. And the additional insurance is if students want to purchase it for cancel any reason. Like if something should happen and they wanted it, there's an opportunity that we can give to those families to say, if you know that something could happen or there might be a death in the family or if you really are unsure, you might want to insure your student's trip. But that is a little higher cost, you can see the cost up there. So making it happen, what do we have to do? Well, this slide, we might have to adjust a little bit. But this was if we started this in October and started collecting. So now we probably won't start till November or December. But we, I broke it down just in a weekly, so parents who get that idea are monthly and how much the total package costs for the student. So it is four thousand four hundred ninety-nine dollars. The deposit's ninety-five dollars to hold their spot. So goodness gracious, if they couldn't come up with, you know, they had to cancel, they've only paid ninety-five dollars. That would be their loss. And each individual can work up their own payment plan. They just have to pay by a specific date, that forty-four ninety-nine. You need not have to go on a weekly or a monthly payment plan, but some people just want that neck in their head. Other things to making it happen. If students do go on this trip, a lot of our students are constantly looking for scholarships. If they make a two-to-three-minute video, they can apply for a thousand-dollar scholarship. So that is kind of nice if they go on that trip, they know they have the opportunity to apply for a scholarship. And they also help you make kind of like a student GoFundMe page. It's not ran by GoFundMe, that's the terminology that I am using. But if you run this little page on everyone's social media platform, parents, grandparents, aunts, uncles, and people can donate to their prospective trip. So that's what the customizable tour donation page is. So we're not saying we're going to do that, but if students want to do that, that is an option that they have in order to technically fundraise, technically. Here was another thing that I just came up with with one of the guides from EF Tours. People are always looking for something fun. Grandma might say, I'm not just giving you a hundred bucks. Grandma might say, and if you look on it, I know it's kind of hard to read from where you're seated, it'll say, buy me a lunch in London. Or buy me a souvenir from the souvenir shop in Paris. So grandma might say, I want to give you twenty-five dollars to buy a souvenir in Paris. So again, this is not something that we might not use, but students, I think, would be fun to see if they can fill that bingo card. If they fill that bingo card with all those denominations, they will have five hundred dollars spending money to spend while they're out in Europe. And that's it. I know you have a bunch of questions.
When do we leave?
Can I go?
Double digits is my time, so. So the biggest question that, I haven't presented any of this to the students yet because of course we're waiting for board approval on all of this. But when I talked about it with, I'm here, you know, some questions. It does state alumni could come, but I don't know if I'd want to open it up to that because then I might have a twenty-one-year-old and I don't want to do that. So I think we're going to just.
That was going to be my question. If I'm a senior this year graduating twenty-four, I'm in your class.
We could, I mean, they're.
That's where I was.
They could go, they could go if they really, really wanted to. But I'm going to tell you right now, their college spring break is not if they're going to college.
At the same time.
They're not aligned, they don't align. So that wouldn't work in regards to depending. If they're going, you know, maybe they're not going to college, which is fine, but it doesn't align with college spring breaks.
I think we want to preference our current kids. And if they happen to be alumni, then we can figure out. But if they graduated four years ago and they see that we're not necessarily targeting that population. We want our kids, we want our current kids to have the priority in the seat.
And it's not just my program either. Someone asked that, it's not just for business students or students that I have in my CTE class. It's for any student in Richmond.
Can you tell a little bit about the business speakers that you referenced?
Well, we're going to, it's all depend, determine how many kids we actually get. So some of our shops, like our souvenir shops, they said, since you're a marketing teacher, they'll have the marketing sales representative come out from that, whatever store we're shopping at. And they'll talk to the students about how marketing is about in Paris and what they do and how they don't use billboard signage as one of their means of marketing. How they don't maybe use social media and what they do for marketing, like magazine or TV or radio. So we will have opportunities, but again, we have to get our kids. I have to fill out the kids, look at their school schedules and say, oh, my gosh. Eighty percent of the kids that are going are in Mrs. Christensen's program and they're in that CTE program. So we're going to cater it a little more toward the business aspects and talk about marketing, accounting, as well as management.
No, do you have to have a promised number, amount of kids to get the pricing that you have?
Six.
Oh, okay.
But six only allows one chaperone.
I was just going to say, how many?
So we'll have to meet each other.
We need twelve. So it is supposed to be six then students or?
Six, six paying people, let's put it that way.
Yeah, per chaperone. Got it. And then the ninety-five-dollar deposit, do they get that back before the trip?
No, that's just a deposit that applied toward the full launch.
Okay, applied to the full.
Good question.
So if it's for, any student in my school can go, but yet the trip is really geared towards business stuff.
But we're catering it toward that, it depends on the population. If, you know, we get some students that are, we don't have French Sham we're going to. But if we have some students that were more, give me another, we're not going to really talk.
There's so many things actually that I could.
Yeah, I know, but just in the paperwork it talked about it was geared towards business class students.
But even the students and teeth, they're going to need business aspects. They're going to need public speaking, they're going to need, you know, networking. So they're going to need all that. So somehow we'll gear it, or I will gear it toward their field.
Will freshmen be able to go?
Yeah.
I'm just making sure I can send both my kids with you guys. I'm going south.
What kind of, what kind of, like, you guys, I don't know if you have any, like, fundraising, like, ideas planned or like?
We have definite ideas and I have them in my room. But again, it's back to the parent meeting because some parents are going to come in saying, I don't really want to fundraise.
Right.
So I'm not even going to entertain that until we have our population that wants to go. But one of the fundraisers has been very, very successful because a hockey mom, I'm a hockey mom with two kids. And we've done bed sheets. And I know that sounds absolutely crazy, but there's bed sheets. And I have everything in my room from all the packets to give out as well as a sample bed sheets, as well as sample swatches of all the colors.
I got some of those sheets.
One of the, one of the things we talked about with fundraising for these trips though is that, you know, you kind of get into the like, well, I funded, I sold a hundred pairs of sheets and you were only able to sell one. So then, you know, kind of dipping up the cost. So I know that when we were talking about the trip and looking at some of these things, like the bingo fundraiser, we're putting it out there. One of the kids that I went on the Spain, I went on the Spain trip with Miss Smallwood last spring break. And literally one of the students paid for the four thousand dollar trip by collecting returnable cans. Every single penny of their trip was from the returnable cans because that was what the parents said. Like, hey, you have to fundraise, it wasn't run through school. So I think too, depending on what the makeup is, you know, if the parents and the students want to, you know, looking at, do we want to do a big group fundraiser? Or do we want to just help support and provide things like, you know, things that students can do individually? I think it'll just kind of again depend on the makeup of the group.
And then one last question, because I know we're way into the double digits now. But how, so all of these things that you guys are going to do or planning to go and do, are you going them as one whole group?
Oh, yeah.
All of them?
With our guy.
Yeah, sure.
So I've been on, this would potentially be my eighth trip through EF, I believe it is. And the way, you're with the guy the entire time. And really how the day is structured is that it's nice because you usually start the day with the guy. You'll do, you know, if it says Eiffel Tower, you'll go, you'll do that. You'll have an hour and a half, maybe two hours of time. And then there'll be free time. And so with that free time, that's where the chaperones always come into play of like, oh, you want to shop? Okay, if you want to shop, go with Miss Christensen. If you want to do a private tour of the Eiffel Tower, come with me. And so it really gives that flexibility of like showing the history, the culture, the art, all of that thing, you know, all of those things. But then also giving kids and the chaperones the freedom to kind of also do what they want to do. Sometimes it's just walk around. But it is, so it is organized as the group, but then there is the ability for a lot of those, those breakoffs and like, you know, as you kind of start to see why everyone's kind of going for different reasons, that kind of, you know, comes into play of like, sometimes you have really artsy individuals that they want to go to every free museum that there is during their three hours of time. So just as long as there's with, as long as they're with an adult, they kind of break off into those, into those groups.
Okay, awesome. We're going to have a lot of adults because all you're going, right?
I'd love to go. I know, you can sign me up.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for presenting. And we will make a decision at the next board meeting or have a decision. Okay, next item on our agenda is a proposed overnight extended trip request to Florida.
Ms. Christensen.
This is a little closer to home.
Hello, everybody. For those of you that have been on the board for a while, this is our third trip to Florida. This is the annual migration that we started as a result of the baseball schedule. And our break, our break never aligned with our schedule. So if the kids took a week off, we would have to start league play on Monday. So we tried to put together a trip for the kids to go down to Florida to play. It is not sponsored by, we are not doing anything. Parents are vacationing with their kids. It's not a school, the only thing that I'm doing or that RBI is doing is running the facilities for them. We practice from nine to twelve every day and then they're going back, they're getting around. They're staying around the St. Pete's area. This is, again, it's zero cost in the district. RBI is paying for the field rental. Kids, it's not mandatory that they go. If kids want to come down, they, they're welcome to. We take anyone in the program that wants to come down there. The state of Michigan, the MHSA changed the rules last year where we can scrimmage other Michigan teams. So last year, our JV and our varsity got discurmaged at two different facilities. The unique thing about our trip is we're at the New York Yankees minor league park where Babe Ruth was. So when all those great teams were down the spring training, we're at that facility. We're lucky that we've been doing it and so they let us come back every year. Again, there's no cost to the kids as far as from, we're asking them to fundraise for anything. Kids are welcome to come down with their families. I actually wasn't going to do the trip this year because our spring break was changed. And so our spring break was moved up. So now we have a week to prepare before our league game. But when I asked the kids and the parents of the returning students, players and families, they all want to continue with the, with the trip. So so far, it's been, knock on wood, it's been perfect. The storms hasn't affected anybody staying, hasn't affected any of the field down there. And just think it's a great experience for the kids. It's just a nice facility. And the assistant coaches come down there and it's a good week. We only go from Sunday to Thursday, nine to five every day. We buy pizzas for the kids. I take all the equipment down there that we need to run practice. That's kind of it, goes for just for our break. Kids don't want to miss any school. Kids are not required to go. If they want to come, it's totally what they want. We give them a T-shirt if they go down there to symbolize the trip. Last year, we played against Stevenson in Chippewa Valley down there. This year, we're playing some teams, if the board grants a supervision, we're playing some teams from on the west side of the state. Yeah, that we wouldn't normally play. But there's a lot of teams. Most good programs go down south. Most of the esteemed programs are down there. All, anyone that's competing at a high level. So it's really great for our kids and our kids see that.
Coach, have you had an idea about how many kids go that are in your program? Is it like fifty percent?
So more than that. I would say it's greater than fifty percent. We had two teams last year, so we had twenty-five. I think maybe we only had ten kids stay back last year, if that. A lot of times, families were taking other kids down with them. So they were bugging down, like, I know Beacons were staying with, Pierces were staying with Beacons down. And that happened for several families.
So a quick math about sixty-six, sixty-seven percent, at least.
I thought it was going to be less. I didn't think we could go this year, I'm going to be honest with you, because we have the week off and we had a week to prepare. And honestly, it's really worked for me to go down there. So I thought for sure we'd be out of the trip and the parents were really on me to go back down. They love the beach and practice some baseball.
Well, I practice in, in good weather. You're up here in the third ice and they can actually get some time in, right?
Yeah, it's a nice, for those that went down, it was great.
Anyone have any other questions?
No, just thanks for giving them the opportunity.
Yes, yep. And again, we'll make a decision or have a decision for you at the next board meeting.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is a proposed overnight extended trip request to Ohio.
All right. We've been doing this trip for the past year and a half.
It was before I came back. I think it was the first year down in defiance.
And they actually changed the defiance, the same tournament, but they moved it from Defiance to the University of Penly, which is actually really awesome because their facilities are much cleaner, which it wasn't in Defiance, but everybody there is even better. But we will be leaving, students will be missing one day of school. They'll be missing Friday, December fifteenth, which is going to be the first day of the tournament. And then our overnight trip is staying that night. And then we have another, well, we have five duels on Friday and then we stay overnight. And we have five more duels on Saturday. It's great, it's a great sport for our kids. We get to go down to Ohio, which is one of the best states at wrestling. We get to see a bunch of good competition from really kids and wrestlers. really, uh, kids and wrestlers from outside of Michigan, so it's, it's just a great, I mean, you can't find 10 duels in two days like that anywhere in Michigan. So it's, it's just an awesome tournament, we've been going for a long time, and, on that, it's, it's a great tournament for the boys.
So you guys are there for two nights?
We were one night.
Oh, one night, so you drive on Friday.
Yeah, we'll drive down on Friday, and then we stay Saturday night.
Friday night into Saturday.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Friday night into Saturday.
Got it. And then, is this just for them, the varsity wrestling team?
Um, this is actually, um, we'll bring, last year, we were able to get, um, two, a varsity A and, A and a varsity B team, so we're gonna try to do that again, um, if that's not the case, then we'll bring down as many kids as we can, with 10 duels, um, the kids get, you get beat up a little bit, so they have extra bodies, it's really a good thing.
And then how do you guys, like, how, how do you guys get down there?
So, the way we get down there, um, we have our team van, which can fit 10 kids and myself, and then, um, usually we have other coaches drive many vans, like Coach Miss will drive his minivan, um, and then we'll usually have a few parents that stay down there.
Okay, so parents, they care fully, and stuff, okay.
Yep, yep. Yeah, everything is paid for by the, um, the fundraising that we do through the RWA. There's no cost to the school.
For the kids.
For the kids.
Anyone have any further questions? Okay, I believe you're on next.
Yep, yep, next overnight trip.
To Michigan.
Is going to be in Michigan, um, it is December 6th, the New Earth, um, that is a very, very long tournament, and we actually have one of our DWEA duels on Friday, and then we, and we've done this for, yeah, been a long time. Um, we wrestle our, our Friday duel, our BWEA duel, and then we travel down after that, stay the night, let the boys rest, and then the New Earth tournament is a very long, long tournament, um, but the boys don't miss any school for this one, um, I was like, we come back Friday, really late.
Saturday.
Saturday, sorry, long day. Um, we come back Saturday, um, and the boys are home Saturday night.
So again, one night.
Yep, just the one night. Again, it's one of the better tournaments in the state, um, and it is constant, we like to get our kids in our program, the best competition possible, so then they're ready for that competition to present in the year.
Just wanna clarify, didn't make a speller, you said December, it's January 6th, right?
I wrote that on December, it is January.
Okay, that's what I'm making sure, it is, you're back to January, so.
We're good, we're good. Um, yep, no, January 6th is the day that we go down to New Earth.
Any further questions from the board? Okay, thank you very much for presenting, and we'll have a decision for you at the next meeting. You're welcome. Okay, next item on our agenda is our instructional spotlight, attendance matters.
Sure does.
Yes, it does.
All right. Well, thank you, yeah!
All right, so this is the first time that we're actually here presenting our attendance data, so, um, here with me are our Dean of Students, and we're gonna be looking at some district, um, data, some things in place at the district that we have to help improve our attendance, um, and then each of the buildings, we're gonna go into their data as well as their plan. So, school attendance matters, it is arguably one of the most important indicators of student success. We can edu, we can't educate them if they're not here. We have an entire district improvement plan based around the idea of engaging our students. We back it up a step, we can't even engage them if they're not here to be engaged. Um, not only are students missing hours of instructional minutes, they're missing several opportunities for interventions, to participate in extracurricular athletics, uh, they struggle building relationships with their peers and adults in the building, having those connections, they miss out developing good attendance habits for college and their workforce, which is absolutely crucial. Um, three years ago, when I first came to Richmond, when I started to gather information on attendance, um, so we're gonna be looking at several years worth of data, we are looking at attendance from a student support lens. Um, our team has done an amazing job, that although some of these numbers may seem alarming, please know that our district proudly is still in the top 90th percentile of attendance in the entire state of Michigan. So bravo to each of our schools that have very high cell attendance rates. Um, just this school year alone, in the months of September and October, all of our schools have reduced the absences by 1,005 absences just in two months. So awesome job, once again, coming at this at a student support lens, where we're trying to take more proactive measures instead of being reactionary to the data. So, in your mind, I want you to think about some grades that you might anticipate having really strong attendance data, and maybe some grade levels in the back of your mind that maybe you anticipate having some weaker attendance data, it's not from personal experience or anything, you know, but, so think about that for just a moment, and I think that what you're gonna find, um, may be a little shocking. Here's our attendance data by, um, by grade level, not too shocking, but 12th grade has the highest. What you might find alarming is that when we tend to think about elementary, we tend to think they're gonna have amazing attendance, and actually kindergarten has one of the weakest attendance in the entire grade, all the way through eighth grade. So interesting, right? So these are absences? Yes. Okay.
And I will tell you this, when she showed me this data, and I told her she calculated stuff wrong, and when you tell Renee she's done something wrong, she will prove you otherwise, and she went back and double checked, and she pulled the data, and I was, I was shocked to see the number of absences.
Is this right now, this, just this year?
This is, this is last year, it's 22, 23 attendance data from a year ago.
Okay.
What constitutes an absence? Like, if I pull Jackson out an hour before the end of the day, or lunchtime, or what counts as an absence?
Yes, it does, so it, we have two different things, I'm glad to bring that up now, because we just implemented something that we call tardy 10, so before, we were marking students tardy if they admit that, that threshold, um, and now we have different tardy labels in place, so that now if a kid is in that range, they're not still considered absent for that whole day, they're just considered tardy at a more larger scope, which is very important when you think of it from a student safety aspect, they're not absent, they're here, we have to account for them. But you bring up a very good point, so at the state level, they calculate everything from if they are here hours per day, so if you come in an hour late, for example, they still collect your attendance as fully present. However, our database collects it as if you're not, if you're either tardy, or if you've missed two hours, you have been absent for periods of the day, then we calculate, once again, for students of Portland, how can we give interventions if it's a tardiness issue, if it's always, man, this student's always missing ELA, let's find the root cause of this, or if this student happens to be skipping toward the end of the day, or avoiding certain classes, these are all things that we can help mitigate as we look at that data.
Interesting.
And here is our district tardies by month, not surprising, um, we have, obviously, we, we knew May was gonna be up there, and March, fun fact about the month of March in school, it's actually the, we actually have the most days of school in March. This year will be the first year where that's different, now that spring break falls in the last week of March, but typically, as we collected this data, March is the most instructional days for students. Not saying it's correlated, just making a noticing there. And of course, as we anticipate into April, you know, we testing, testing, please be here, be here, so you see that go down. All right, so in 2023, or 2022, 23 school year, we had a total of 28,675 total absences, 15,702 total tardies, that equals 8.6 million instructional minutes lost. A very quick and easy way to improve our academics, improve our engagement in extracurricular and athletics, and build connections, help with climate culture, we've, we've got to tackle, um, this issue, and I think our team has done an amazing job of coming up with some coherent plans. Um, some things that we do at the district level, we have put in place, um, a district improvement student support team, it's specifically a team, uh, we have two, so we have our instruction team for district improvement, and then we have a district improvement student support team. One of the teams among that team specifically addresses attendance, is looking at attendance data, how does attendance impact our student support plan, how does that impact our district improvement plan with all of our initiatives. Um, another thing that we do in each building is we have student support team meetings every single week, where our dean of students run, um, they are there with counselors, social workers, um, and they actually go through the attendance data for consecutive absences, and then your chronic absences, and they help address those students, what are we gonna do with these students, what are we doing with this group of kids, oh, I heard about this, um, student, they're going through this tough time, or whatever, so they gear supports very specifically each week that they are looking specifically at that data. Um, and then we look at trend data that we track each, and every single month, once a month completes, I'll go ahead and give off the, the data. Any questions so far?
With that number for instructional minutes.
It's, but it's getting so much better, and I would love to show you all the ways that we are doing that, so here, I'm gonna give it up to Mr. Gibson for lead.
All right, so looking here, you'll see our absences last year, um, from September to June, um, November and March, you'll notice are our highest, um, absences in terms of months, um, looking at the school year, so we've looked at that, and just kind of thinking about what that looks like in November, you're talking about Thanksgiving holiday, um, in March, you're talking about that, maybe that extra vacation, um, the spring break, that families want to take that extra week sometimes, um, so that's something we discourage, um, obviously, um, at, at our building level, where we kind of get that information to our parents, but then you also look at it as, in a sickness lens, like November and March, those are your highest months in terms of illnesses in the building. Um, we're not telling kids to come to school sick, uh, we don't want that, uh, we actually want them to stay home, because that's actually gonna make, uh, our building healthier, and then our students are gonna be healthier and at school more. So we're actually encouraging students to stay home when they're sick, so we have more students in the building, um, if that makes sense. So just getting that information to parents, targeting November and March, uh, making sure that we're getting the information out there that these were our highest, uh, our highest numbers in terms of absences, let's see what we can do with that.
The panic in every eye up there.
We have our September data here from this year, uh, we saw a decrease, um, almost at every grade level, um, in terms of absences, so that was something we celebrated.
But it's a, it's a, it's a church back in Chicago, I actually taught someone, yes.
And then October data, which we just received, shows a decrease at every single grade level, um, for lead, um, in October, so we were very thrilled about that, uh, we celebrated that in our building, um, so we're gonna continue to acknowledge that with our students and make sure they know that they're doing a good job, and our families, ultimately at the elementary level, it's getting the information to our families, our students sometimes, you know, obviously don't have a lot of control on that, so just letting parents know that, um, they're doing a great job, um, so far this year. Um, so attendance is not just a Richmond problem, it's not just a county problem, or even a state problem, it's a nationwide issue. Uh, we've been tackling this issue the last several years, um, in the district, and we've been encouraging good attendance to our families and students in a variety of different ways, offering many different incentives. Uh, one of those is popsicles with the principals, or McDonald's with Mr. Gibson, um, hot chocolate with the principals, monthly prizes, and then those periodic perfect attendance awards, not awarding them at the end of the year for perfect attendance, but acknowledging it when you get to December, because just getting to December, some adults can't make it, uh, to December without, without getting sick or taking a day, so acknowledging our students throughout the year rather than just at the end, and telling them they're doing a great job is very important. Uh, we've had Dean for the day for our student, uh, who made it all the way to the end of the year last year, um, and made perfect attendance, which is amazing, um, giving gift cards to students Dairy Queen, they love that, love that Dairy Queen, uh, gift cards, and then just recognizing them even at our PBIS assemblies, continuously bringing up to the students, and maybe getting a job by telling them to go home and say, I wanna be at school, tell your parents, Mr. Gibson says to come to school tomorrow, uh, we want you here all the time, um, so those are things we kind of promote, uh, on a consistent basis with our students. Um, studies show that children who are chronically absent in kindergarten and first grade are less likely to read on grade level by third grade, um, that's, that's nothing to hide there, like, that's, that's proven, a chronic they have since is 15 absences or more, um, so just getting that information, I think, is key to the parents, uh, making sure they're aware, like, these are studies that are out there that show, if they're missing this many days of school, if you're taking that, that week-long vacation that's outside of our vacation time, they're losing that instructional time with their teacher and possibly setting them back in the future. So just the, the most important thing is being consistent and getting that information to our parents, whether it's in newsletters, um, you know, social media posts, uh, messages out to our parents, um, you know, contacting them by phone, email, whatever it takes, offering our support to them is very important. At the grade level, we've actually had competitions, so our, our classes get related to us, and even our teachers as well, uh, so to boost our attendance, we promoted classroom competitions, uh, monthly recognition of our top classroom attendance winners, these bulletin boards in our hallway, we update it every single month, and students, uh, do, do, I can take a look at that and make sure that, um, they're getting on their teachers and, uh, about wanting to win those awards, so, really, they're getting a whole, uh, extra recess with Mrs. Manguni and Mr. Gibson, uh, free time award in the classroom, um, just recently, we delivered snacks to the students, uh, every student got to pick a snack, uh, Vegas chips or whatever they wanted, uh, we brought a resource officer with us last year to help us to deliver snacks as well, so just kind of making it, you know, our goal in the building, um, and giving them something to shoot for and something, uh, fun to reward them with. As with any initiative, there's always room for improvement, uh, you know, for, most important thing is to be consistent, uh, we can't have a couple of good months like we've had, and then say, oh, you know, take our foot off the gas pedal and then just kind of coast, we have to be consistent with what we're doing, so that's very important, so continue to promote and expand our positive incentives for good attendance, uh, continue getting the information to our parents is key, uh, why it's important to be at school, not just to be there, but be on time, uh, is very important. We have been doing this in our newsletters and through messages to our families, but again, consistency is key. Uh, working with their younger families, specifically, as we discussed, there was mentioned earlier, kindergarten, um, you know, it's, it's not just kindergarten, uh, kindergarten is an important grade level as well, um, giving them those early skills, um, honing those in and getting them ready for the future is important. Uh, we did see a big decline in our kindergarten absences in September and October, so we're excited about that, that's a great sign, so congratulations to our families with that. Um, we talked about focusing on the months that we really struggled with, specifically, again, November and March, just making families aware, being consistent with the information we're putting out there. Studies show that up to 5% of children, um, have school-related anxiety, and may struggle to understand or explain why they refuse to attend schools, so developing positive relationships with the students, with our families, offering additional support through our care program that we offer here in the district, and our social work, uh, you know, services is key to improving attendance, not only at lead, but the entire district. And then most importantly, uh, we need to make sure that our students want to come to school, uh, engaging lessons, uh, popular, uh, after-school programs, and fun classroom learning environment will make students want to be here, you know, just them coming to school and seeing a smile when they walk in the door is super important, um, to start off their day great, uh, them wanting to, you know, say, telling their parents in the morning, I wanna be at school today, it's gonna be so much fun, that's what we should be shooting for in terms of, um, instruction in the classroom.
All right, how's everybody doing? You know, we're all kind of running on fumes here, everyone's tired, so, it'll be quick. So a lot of things that, uh, that I'm gonna talk about are, are actually very similar to what Mr. Gibson just talked about, um, as you can see on here, this is our month-by-month break down here at RMS, um, and even though June isn't, isn't, well, we have hardly any days in June, uh, but our biggest days are November and March, um, and just like at lead, uh, we are targeting both of those months very intentionally, um, with a bunch of different incentives that we're putting in place. I think Mr. Manguni forgot to bring up, uh, hunting season too, I know hunting season with, with, November is, is always a huge thing for us as well, um, so, obviously, we know we have some hurdles that we need to tackle, but, uh, we are getting to where we need to go. Uh, trend data from this year, uh, this is with September, uh, very similar to elementary, we've got improvements almost at every grade level, um, I think a lot of that is some of the programs that we're putting, not just the programs we're putting in place, but, um, you know, a lot less quarantines, a lot less things like that, that we have to worry about from a school standpoint too, uh, so that's, that's helping with that transition. So that's helping with that transition. October also looking very good for us. It's just one, it looks like one grade that we need to focus on, but other than that there's been improvements in all grades for the month of October, which is outstanding. So just some overview, like I, you know, I know Renee kind of talked about it before, you know, just from some of my experiences in the county and just from listening to some other colleagues in terms of attendance, reality, we're in like the mid-90s here in terms of like average rate of attendance, which is outstanding, not just in the county but statewide as well. But, you know, obviously we want to look at areas in which we can improve, where can we get better? We should always be doing that. You know, we had some growing pains and some transitions of people into new positions, including myself last year, so you know, some of those things that affected us at our school, we are, our biggest focus for this year is not just student engagement, but relationship building. I think it's super important at this age for our kids to want to be at school. So creating those programs, those fun classes that they want to attend, maybe having two gym classes on your schedule might be okay for a middle school kid. So getting them excited about wanting to be at school. And then just identifying our gaps and trying to do our best to address them. So that's what we've been doing in a lot of these meetings, they've been super, super productive, really enjoying them so far. Just some of our initiatives that we're putting forward, a lot of heavy Kagan activities in our classes to get kids involved and more active in class. You know, we've pushed our new social contracts, which is like a living, breathing document that the kids, they talk about it in all of their classes. And then just our SHINE program, as you can see in our Facebook messages that we send out, we always send a weekly thing on Friday with a lot of kids, a lot of kids smiling on there, winning prizes. So you know, again, pushing that want-to-be-in-school mentality and I think that's super important because it just goes hand in hand with your attendance. If you build it, they will come. So as you can see, you know, we've got a lot of kids doing a lot of different activities in class, lots of smiling faces. That's, and that's what we're all about here, that's what we want to be about here. I stole that from Field of Dreams, right? Okay. Then this gray-haired fellow right here, that's picture me and everybody on our pink out that we did. So just an action plan for this upcoming school year, some weekly student support team meetings, identifying students with gap trends in our attendance. We've also involved our secretaries in this meeting as well, since they're, I mean, they're in reality, they're the vein of our building and know really what's going on with what families, who has hand, foot, mouth, who doesn't. So that's, they're the ones that are bringing all that up. Creating intervention plans to address student needs, that's what we are, we are doing that on an individual basis, which has been very, very good. We've got a flow chart that kind of tracks all of that in our building, that everybody in our meeting, just we're on that pretty much 24/7. Regular attendance letters and calls to families, again, a part of that meeting, that's a huge initiative that we've been doing and then our two biggest target months of November and March in terms of competitions. So again, just like Mr. Gibson said, if kids are sick, we don't want them in the building, but we do want to encourage our families to send kids to school. I think I put a message out last week that we had, as of right now, about 270 students for perfect attendance in November, which is solid. So we're hoping to get that all the way through the month. And then we've added some at-home wellness checks from our admin team along with our school resource officer. That's a part of our program as well that we have added to this year.
What does that entail?
What is what?
Your at-home wellness check?
Like, so if we have, let's say we have a kid that has missed six days of school in a row and maybe we can't get a hold of them, so then we would contact our school resource officer to reach out to them. Or, you know, potentially plus driving down there to meet with the family as well. Yeah? Any other questions?
Thank you. All right. So the absences you see here for the high school, similar to the other two buildings. The only differences are rather than March being the second, it's for us in May. Probably attributed to the end of the school year with high school students. One of our focuses though is obviously creating those engaging lessons throughout the entire year, making sure that students know that there's obviously a purpose with what we're doing throughout the year and making those connections. So that was really the only difference with that, absences there. You can see a decline, we're very proud of this. We have made a decline for the month of September. We've worked really hard, a great staff this year who is, you know, trying new things and maybe changing some procedures and protocols to make sure that we're trying to get kids here and see this. You'll see the same thing with October, you'll see a decline with every month there. So we're really proud of the two months that we have, but as the dean said, we obviously have a lot of work to do still. You know, that instructional time loss that Miss Staples roughed us at the beginning, I am not a data person, but when she gives you that number, you know, it's hard to argue and it's hard to not try to figure out something to do. You have to try something new. So that's what we're trying to do at the high school. So the first one there is obviously seeing the need to respond, like I said, you know, Mrs. Staples, working with us as deans, working with the principals, working with our support teams, it's very important to see what we're doing, is it working? And have the ability to change it if it's not. Sometimes we get stuck doing the same thing over and over again and seeing the same results. So I think just having that support from our team, knowing that we can try new things and if it doesn't work, we can go back to the drawing board. Obviously, like I said, the September and October data is encouraging and promising and for us, the big focus at the high school is creating an environment that is positive, safe for our students and also it's an engaging learning environment. We want it to be a place where kids want to be and I think we've made a lot of strides with that this year. Hopefully you can read that, but just some focuses and things that we did this year and last year and you can see we trying to bring that fun back and some normalcy back to that high school experience. I mean, our high school students have been through a very difficult time in the last few years, so just bringing back some normalcy I think is important. We had a focus the whole first week of school, there was to be no curriculum, no syllabus, no books. We wanted them to create relationships with students and create that positive culture with our kids. So obviously cultivating those positive relationships and again, making our CHS a place where kids want to come every day, we think is the key to improving our attendance. Some classroom and school-wide expectations, they worked on social contracts this year. We embedded it into our instructional staff, building why as an instructional goal for all of our teachers. They need to be a part of it. We're all, obviously we play a role, it can't just be the administration, but our teachers have taken on that role and they're supporting us in this initiative. Attendance procedures have been established and I know Mrs. Staples referred to the T-10. So you know, for a high school student, if they already know, you know, they're going to get an absence, what's the purpose, what's the point? So just those reflections and those small tweaks that we've made, I think have improved, you know, kids coming to school. Are we noticed, oh, I should talk about the warning bell. Mrs. Abo did this without me knowing, she put in a warning bell and it's like a countdown. So the last minute, the kids can see the countdown and it's, you know, it sounds like something very simple, but it's a visual for our students and they can call it the Zabo warning bell at school, so kids have fun with it. The next one, our PBIS programs are, we noticed, the traits of teamwork, collaboration, leadership, communication and problem solving, those are our focuses. Again, trying to make school fun and engaging. The hall pass system is new this year. From a safety standpoint, we thought it was important to come up with some protocols and procedures so we knew where kids were at all times. High schools are very busy and we always worry about the safety of our students. This has given us a lot of data too in the sense of, you know, kids leaving class, instructional time lost. So it's been a very helpful program. Obviously it's in infancy stages, so I don't have a lot to speak to it, but it's been very helpful and our teachers have even commented to us the lack of, or the decline of interruptions in their classroom has been phenomenal because the student creates the pass and the teacher can okay it and can continue on teaching, so we're not losing out on that instructional time for students. Newsletters, as the other two deans said, just that partnership with our parents and our community is important. Focusing on student engagement, obviously the Kagan strategies is our expectation that every week there's at least some form of Kagan activity occurring in the classrooms. And we encourage our teachers to try new things because there's a lot of strategies that are out there and they are doing it, so it's fun to see. The monthly district school improvement team meetings, I know Mrs. Staples spoke on that, you know, taking it from the district level, bringing that back and working at the school level. Attendance letters are still being used, weekly attendance reports, and again, I agree with Mr. Knight, you know, Mrs. Verani and Mr. Schaefer are key components in this, so they help gather those reports for us. And then every Monday morning we come together as a support staff and we review our attendance and we look at how do we help this kid and this kid and are there things going on that maybe our social worker can assist with? So it's definitely a collaborative effort on those Monday morning meetings. Behavior intervention plans, obviously, is there something we can do? And I think that's one of the issues with attendance is looking at that root cause. Not to say attendance letters are important, informing our parents, but figuring out why that kid doesn't want to come to school is crucial and every kid has a different story and getting to know that kid's story is really what we're here for, to try to get them here every day. Wellness checks, as Mr. Knight said too, Mr. Racoi, our officer Racoi, he goes out if asked and works with our parents and our students if needed. And then the last one, just collaboration with outside stakeholders. I put in, you know, our partnership with care is huge. We have students with anxiety and depressions, preventing them from coming every day, not feeling connected. So obviously that's a great resource. The Home Family Services is also another great resource that we use, our backpack blessings program that we have housed right in our building. Those are looking at those root causes and why kids aren't coming here and how do we give them everything that they need so they can come to school and experience it like every other student. And then some of our next steps, obviously we're still working on increasing that student engagement, creating that positive culture. Internal, external factors, like I said, just what we can control and what we can't, but doing everything that we can and looking at the whole picture for every child. Collecting attendance data, obviously through Power School, but now this e-hall pass report allows us to really look at instructional time lost, kids leaving a lot of classes and obviously that data is helpful so we can talk to our students to see why they're out of the classroom so much so we can assist with that. Recognizing and partnering with all stakeholders to address attendance concerns. As I said, this takes everybody, it can't just be one or two people. And then obviously the collaboration between district and school improvement meetings. So questions for me? Thank you.
Thank you. I get one question, Renee, because it could be for all. But coming off of the COVID and the anxiety of, I mean, is there still like a stigma where, oh, they're sick and they're taking more than one day off because they want to make sure and is there a lot more still concerns about COVID?
I think that it's a very...
Testing and...
I think that certainly the first year when you had those parameters from the state, you had your designated free feed, you needed a quarantine, all of that, I definitely think that there is still lingering effects from the pandemic, with whatever that data today. I do think it's less as the years are going by, but I do think that attendance is kind of a behavior. If you're consistently taking, you know, data shows that if students miss two or more days in the month of September, it's pretty much a trigger that that's going to be their continued absences. And it very well, that's a great inference that parents are still very hesitant to bring their child in because of this, it is a very real thing still.
You can still see that out even in regular society if you accidentally cough people up.
Yeah.
I mean, so it's still out there.
Right.
There's still this anxiety over it.
And all we can do is look at our data and say, are we getting better from year to year in our cohort? So if second grade had the best attendance last year, is that positive behavior integrating with those current third graders and is that behavior still evident there? And all we can do is try to instill the love of being here with our climate and culture and all we can do is try to improve those numbers and try to help that stigma.
Thank you. Thank you guys for staying late.
Okay, next item on our agenda is our 2022, is that, or is it 2020 and 2022 bond budget review.
Okay, as I mentioned in the previous board meetings, we are nearing really the end of all bond projects. What you have in front of you and it's also a different format in your slide, we issued the bond in two series. The 2020 series was for 38.4 million and the 2022 series was 738,000 for a total of 39 million. That included estimates that we would receive for interest, et cetera. To date, we have spent 38.7 million in the bond with all the projects, which leaves, when you look at the third column or column D, excuse me, about $432,000 that has yet to be paid or spent. Of that 432, if you look at the red line, OX still has about $210,000 to pay out to contracts that were already previously approved by the board, they just haven't finished the close-out or punch list items. We have a bill of 15,000 for curb appeal, which leaves us to about $206,000 to allocate for projects. It's important, as I mentioned in the backup, there was, this bond, we did a lot. It was within the scope that the voters approved, but it wasn't in the original bond application. For instance, just the air conditioning alone was 1.5 million dollars as an estimate, air conditioned, all three of our building, that we were able to do because we had the right conditions of our bond. Interest rates low, pricing coming in lower than budgeted, et cetera. If you're working on a bond project now, that's not necessarily the case. We added additional projects and scope to work such as the additional parking lot, expanding the elementary parking lot. We did renovations to the transportation building to make sure that as we were doing the projects, starting one, it made sense to do it at that point. We expanded the baseball and softball diamonds, we relocated, that was a part of the original scope, but after reflecting in potential additions that would be placed off the middle school, it made sense to do it. So we've done a lot with this bond and I think every room, every facet's been touched and so forth. So we have about $206,000 left to look at priorities. Some of the things that we did not do, one of the things that whether it's going to come out of the bond or whether it's going to have to come out of general fund, is we had to look at the shot put circles and pits that are over by the baseball field. In the design, when you throw it, if you really are a good thrower towards the end, it starts going down to the swales there, so it would roll down, so we gotta either turn them or would it make sense right now to relocate them to another spot? So that's what we're in the process of doing right now. The move of a wall between the gymnasium and cafeteria at Lee Elementary School, that was bid out, it was about a 75, 80,000 dollar price tag at the time. We did not put it in because the wall is, it's still working, but it's on its last legs. That will either have to be out of the bond or a future project. High school bleachers at the high school gym, they're nearing 30 years old. There's been a lot of repair bills done to those bleachers, they're currently working, but it's, we need to look at that. Furniture, though we did do a lot with furniture in the classrooms, bookcases, desks. Furniture, though we did do a lot with furniture in the classrooms, bookcases, desks, et cetera. There are still some older furniture that is in need of replacing, kidney tables, particularly kindergarten tables at the elementary school, they were not replaced. The media center furniture at the elementary school and high school were not replaced. Most of these chairs in here have no caps on the bottom. So over time, if they're dragged, they're going to start tearing up the carpets. So either we're going to find caps or look at replacement furniture. And we did a while back, look at costs, like for instance, covering those and recapping, it was just as much as buying new furniture for the amount of repair. There is a couple areas that did not get air conditioning. The high school mini gym, that's the only area that did not get air conditioning.
Why didn't it?
Didn't get picked up on the scope. That's, but the gym and the new gym got it, and the middle school gym and the high school with that mini gym, for whatever, that unit was replaced in the previous bond, in the 13 bond. So I don't know if it was labeled, it just was a...
Does that work?
It works. It eats it, but it's not air conditioning compatible.
Oh, gotcha.
There are particularly two sets of doors, though we do have budgeted our fund, allocated fund balance like we do for buses. We have $50,000 allocated for door replacements as a line item. We have not spent that yet, but the cafeteria doors and the gym doors off Lee, they're, as you're driving by, they're the green ones still. They're rusting at the bottom. Preston and the team is done trying to keep water out the ceiling, but those eventually will have to get replaced. And obviously, you can always add, look at additional buses as an option. Buses now typically run about $130,000, $140,000. Prior to COVID, they were about $90,000, $100,000, over your budget.
But we already do budget.
We budget, we basically buy one bus a year. I believe we have, did we finally get the new buses? So the ones we had over a year ago ordered, it finally started arriving, so...
All three are here.
All three, so. So we will, from the bid process for buses, we will buy another, issue an order for another bus, which probably won't be here until August of next year. But yes, we do budget a bus every year.
Yes, I do.
So I guess at this point, I'm not looking for direction at today's meeting, but at some future meeting, direction of how we want to allocate the last set of bond dollars. You can see just a quick percentage of not spent in the 2022 series. We have about 20% of that series still to spend, a little less than 20, but we're less at a percentage of the series 20, which could be, let me just, we're there. We met the requirements in terms of spending the amount we needed to within the first five years of the bond or whatever that number is, so.
Did you have an estimate for bleachers?
The bleachers, I have a quote, one of those online, but I don't have a company, a final cost. We have about 2,000 people we sit in those bleachers, so I will get a cost for the bleachers. Because that was one that we will be looking at.
So where are we at? So here's the number, and you've given us this, so our unit administration want to prioritize and then bring it to the board. When are we going to take care of the stuff that we could talk about?
I need to get quotes, because some of the stuff would have to go out to bid. Like, I don't know what a high school bleachers cost. Ballpark, I was told it's a half a million dollars by the contractor. So if we're going to do that, it would be a combination of bond dollars slash fund balance as a one-time expense. I don't know if there's any other items on here that the board, that's not listed here that the board wants to see.
Because I don't think we've been asked that.
Correct, we have not.
So, no, so that's...
This is the start of that process.
Right, so what's your goal? How long is the process going to take, I guess, is what I'm asking. Do you think? What are you looking at where you would like, or do we have a timeframe where we have to spend that? That's a good question.
Well, there eventually, there is a timeframe that has to set. Is it five years after the bond? So we have until 2027. If we sold it in '22, you have until 2027, if it's five years to spend it all. Anything that's bid is going to be a two-month process. A month that you're putting out to bid, evaluating, coming to the board for approval, it's a two-month process. So things like bleachers, furniture, collapsible wall, we did get shot puts, costs that ranged anywhere from under $20,000 to $30,000, $35,000, was it? $31,000 was the highest. And so we're talking to the companies here, why is there such a large discrepancy?
But is it, is the idea that you want us to say, you know, this all looks good, start working on a process? And for example, for my question, the shot put area. Now, obviously, that's a concern for the sport, right, of how it goes? So is that something that, you know, it's...
That's pretty...
Yeah.
The shot put's got to be corrected. Either we're either turning it so it goes more straighter to Lee, or if in any future, if you're going to put new stuff in there, and in the future, the thought is, if you're ever going to expand that parking lot of Lee and go on the other side, why would you invest it there? Why wouldn't you just move it to a spot that is not going to be affected in a future addition? Similar to what we did with the varsity field. If this board were to go to the community in the future, you'd be looking at additions. You'd be looking at, you probably would have elementary parents saying, you need a larger parking lot at that elementary school. But the only way to do it is put it on this side of the road, in where that shot put and disc gets, or at.
So is that, is that something that is this dollar figure discussion? Or is it something that, as a district, we have to take care of that? And whether you figure out, you move it, and then down the road, you got to move it again, or do, you know what I mean? I guess that's what I'm asking, is it...
For that particular example, we have to fix it. So either we're going to turn it and do the smaller costs, and in the future, if we ever added a parking lot, you're going to have to move it to another spot.
And then do you have any, have you had any conversation of where that other spot would be?
It would be, the only other spot we have is behind the high school main gym, nearing those soccer fields.
Oh, okay.
Because you don't want to go too over far, because if you ever add it on to the high school, it would make sense to come off the science wing or science edition.
So I guess what I...
So you got that. The wallet Lee is, it takes several people to open and close that, so.
What I would like to see then is a list of these things in some kind of like priority type order, I guess, according to, you know, you, the administrators, whatever, I don't know, get together with your team. And then also, just, it doesn't have to be an exact amount, but you know, roundabout, like quote, I guess, figure for all of them, so that we can kind of decide what we, you know, what we like to prefer to take care of, like, right now or whatever, you know what I'm saying? I think we could have a much better discussion if we had that information, I guess.
Okay.
I would look at things that are a safety concern first.
Certainly, right.
Like the exterior doors.
But again, those things...
And the bleachers.
Yeah, but those things too could be regular money.
Right.
I guess that's where I'm trying to come out of it.
Coming out of different doors, that kind of thing, so, but that...
But if there are a lot of money, maybe they do come out of this, like that can think, so that's why I think, I think we need that information before we kind of can proceed.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Next item on our agenda is Board Policy 2406, Board Officers' Duties.
I'll just, I'll start, and then I'll turn it over to you guys. At the October, I believe it was ninth board meeting, this policy was talked about when we did the other policies. From that meeting, I tried taking the notes that I had written down and crafting some language that you see in the policy. And then from there, I had sent it off to the attorneys for review to make sure the language I was crafting wasn't violating or illegal, or doing something that we shouldn't be doing. And generally, as I wrote in the backup, the attorneys were fine with the language, but they did want to make sure that we, I stressed to the board and to you, that there's no meat to this, there's no teeth to this. So if a board member doesn't want to do it, there's really only three options you have as a board to take action. Publicly say, censor the board by a resolution, saying they're not following board policy. If we did committee assignments, removing them. If they hold one of the offices, like Vice President, President, Treasurer, Secretary, you would have to vote, you could vote to remove them from office. Again, that would take a form of the board. But other than that, the policies that is in red and are highlighted yellow would be the changes that would be made, should the board approve this, change it to this policy. I then had Deb look at it when we met one time. I turned it over to her, basically capturing, was this the conversation that occurred? And then it was to come back to the board. I'll turn over there.
Thank you. Are there any comments from anybody? Everybody should have had a chance to take a look at this.
I did take a look at it, and I have a couple of comments, actually. First of all, I'm not sure, I'm not sure, I mean, I'm okay with like putting policy in play, I suppose, but like, they're really, like Brian said, there really isn't anything that we can do. So I don't know if it belongs in policy or somewhere else, I guess, I don't know. But if we put in policy, that's fine, I'm fine with that. But I think that, like, I have an issue, I guess, with a couple of things. The first thing being that, you know, I don't know that you would have to retake Board Member 101. I mean, I feel like if you took a class, then you have the information. I mean, if that were the case, then anybody who sat on the board for however year, we decided, one year, two years, three years, they should all retake it. That's my opinion, but whatever. Not that, also, why should the district take on, take on that extra cost and stuff after? I just feel like if you took a class, I have the information, but...
I guess maybe like if it's like 10 years, 20 years ago.
Oh, well, it says one, two, or three down here, I think, you know?
Right.
But even, even then, I mean, I would feel like, I guess, maybe the board president at that time should be able to give you kind of a little bit of a refresher, rather than, I don't know, cost of district money to do that, I don't know. But that's just my two cents.
Are you talking about any of the CBA classes?
No, she's just 101.
Just 101. Yep.
That would be that third...
Because where you have to retake it.
The third bullet.
The third bullet under professional...
Correct, yes. And then, not that I'm against, I guess, term limits per se, but we kind of already control that, because we nominate an individual for an office, and we can choose as a group to either vote them in or not in that office.
Yeah, I agree. But I guess what I struggle with is, after I've been on as president for three years, it's hard to kind of self-critique or look in on yourself, because I feel like you are now, kind of everything is, you've helped plan and make it up and make those deals. So they're your ideas, you and the superintendent kind of working so closely, that now, it's hard to now, like, see or your shortcomings, I guess. Do you know what I'm saying? So I think after you've been in there for, so then if you can step outside for just a year, then you could see, oh, wait a minute, now I can see how come, maybe, it could see, like, the superintendent maybe isn't being, you know, communicating as well on this end. Or maybe I, as a president, you know, like, I can't believe I was doing that to that person. I see now how that could be frustrating from the sun. To just give you a perspective on two different levels, you know, I, that's the only thing I would feel. And I mean, it's really, for me, the most part, the president level, because the other levels, I feel like you're not in such a leadership role, I guess. You're not, like, talking like personally with the lawyer when you're calling the lawyer, because like, that's who constantly talks to the lawyer, is the president and the superintendent. So now, you know, it's three years in, and everything that's happened, it's kind of hard sometimes, I think, to say, well, maybe I made a mistake, or we should go on a different avenue, because you've been planning.
You're too close.
Yeah, you're too close. You can't...
You've already created the culture.
And I'm not saying I don't...
And that's what I guess, that's the only reason why I brought it up, I guess.
I'm not saying that I don't, I'm not saying that I disagree with you, I guess. I just think we already have the power to do that.
But we don't necessarily always, because what happens is, is down the road, if all of a sudden, people aren't, you know, staying on the board, and board members are being appointed, you know, it can come to a point where it's one person running a board again. And individuals that are just getting on the board because they're doing a favor, but not really doing a favor because they're just kind of doing whatever that person in charge says is correct, because they're like, you know, we think you know better. Where in all actuality, even if you think somebody knows better, you should be challenging and questioning. So I guess that's what worries me, is that, like Brian had pointed out, and our lawyers, there may be a time where nobody wants to have it. You know, and we can run into that, but I'm hoping we'll always be to the point where many of us want it. You know, like, I think that we should be filling our board that way. And I guess, I don't know, this is in hopes, in case it doesn't get filled that way, that maybe it could encourage somebody that maybe wouldn't step out, to step out, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, but if they don't want to take, I mean, that's a pretty big, like, speaking in terms of presidency, because you said that's the one that you're mostly talking about, like, that's a pretty big role, you know, and like, it is way more time-consuming, I think, than just, quite frankly, than my role is.
Correct.
And not everybody may have, they may have the time to be on the board, but not have the time to dedicate to that, like, you know what I mean?
Sure, they don't have to run.
So that doesn't...
Well, they don't have to be the president.
Right, no, exactly. But I'm just saying, what if you have a lot of individuals on the board like that? And then, then you have a board president that's doing whatever, everybody seems to think a good job, and then they get nominated again, they get voted in again, like...
But I think as a board, it's healthy to change the leadership.
Yeah, but we do have the power to do that already.
To do that, yes, but, yeah, we do. I just think it'd be healthier to be forced to do it every three years, but that's my opinion.
I'm not totally against it, I just, I already said it, I'm sorry.
Anybody else have any comments on any part of the policy or what Mr. Holmes has supplied us with?
Well, I'm just going to say that I don't know why we need to have policy to talk about how to vote for officers or taking classes, all of that, when you can't, you can't enforce the policy. That makes no sense to me. So I, and I also, this is, this is not, in my opinion, conversation that needs to happen at the board table at our business meeting. This is workshop conversation. I don't know why, well, some of these points could be valid, but they're conversations that we should have as a board, whether it's at your organizational meeting, whatever you do. What are we committed to do? And we did that in January. And we, there are some things that we committed to do that we haven't done, and then, so we're going to have to figure that out come January. But to tell me that I have to, that someone who is doing a good job as the board president, and after a three-year time, they go off, I just, that's not in the policy. You don't want someone to be any kind of officer. You don't vote for him, you don't nominate him. I just think this is a waste, I think it was a waste of Brian dealing with our attorney, all of that kind of stuff. Let's figure out, how do we want our board to go? And if it's, we're committed, because I believe that we need to be committed to take the 101 class. I think we all, we all know that. And I believe that we should take classes periodically, and go to the conferences and that, I do. But to make it a, I just, I don't get it.
I think that it was worth our time to create and establish a guideline to then, whenever that next, whether it's a workshop or organizational meeting, to be able to implement. to be able to implement, and now we already know what.
This is a guideline. This is, you wanted to put this together because you want to make a policy.
This was brought to our attention now because we were going over policy.
Correct, that's why.
That's the reason why it was brought out and discussed.
Right, but this right here that we have is not for future talk. You're discussing this and we're deciding whether in two weeks we're gonna make this board policy. If this was, if this was truly, we wanted to talk and get some ideas and work as a group, then you do that in a workshop. You don't, you don't change.
You can make a policy anytime, so we can hold on this and actually implement it after the next meeting.
Oh, no, I, listen, I'm saying, I don't know why we would put this together as a policy when there's no meat to it. You can't do anything about it if someone chooses not to take a class. Yes, we can publicly say what it says or you can censure all of that stuff. That will, okay, that's great, but I'm still sitting at this table with you.
Yeah, but I could, you could enforce that you can't get an office, meaning president, vice president, treasurer, or secretary unless you're taking school board 101.
How about beyond that? You know?
At the very least...
School board 101 has nothing to do with being an officer of the board. It has to do with, when you come on this board, you don't have a clue what you're doing. And school board 101 gives you guidance.
Right, sure.
That booklet is fabulous, we all know it, that we have it, all of that. That's what school board wants, nothing to do with what your leadership on a board...
But your leadership on the board should be more educated than just walking it off the street, you would think.
Professional development is huge.
I mean, but, yeah, but, okay, but we've already done that. We already had someone coming off the street to become the president.
I know, so...
Okay, right. And so, now, but the whole point is that just by making it a policy, how about you just, you know, as a group, you don't have someone coming off the street that has never sat at the board table, never been a president.
Because this is an evolving group that continues to go on. We may not be here five years from now. So if it's in policy, then it will give direction to the next group, maybe, to say, this must be here for some reason.
Whoever wants to be on the board next. Wait, you, it's not just coming in and voting.
I mean, it's obviously a bigger discussion than just tonight for many of us. And I'm okay with waiting to talk about it. I mean, I could continue to talk about many of this. We've been wanting to talk about it for a while and it's kind of a struggle to get workshops in with everybody's schedule, we're all very busy people, so...
Well, I would disagree with that because we've never, other than what we've done in January, really, Angela, when have we had a conversation about another workshop?
I know, Angela and I have...
No, 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 I'm talking about what you just said, that we can't because of schedules.
I think we're all very busy and booked as it is. To squeeze in another workshop would have been, you know, it's...
But if we have this workout, we have talked about having another workshop throughout this entire year.
We've talked about it.
We haven't done it, I don't know why.
Because nobody has committed to it or no one has really brought forward what we wanted to do.
I can get one together.
We did talk.
We did talk. We did agenda together and some dates together, if you want. Candace and I could spearhead that.
We did talk about having a workshop after the new year. We talked about doing an evaluation of the board. We talked about, we actually talked about, this is where we would have this discussion.
Right, we did talk about that.
On this piece, we did talk about...
But I thought we talked about doing that before or...
Before the elections, which would be, right.
But this is, but this is, this is change, not change, creating board policy.
I know.
That's where I'm just saying that I have the issue.
I think this just came up happenstance because it was coming up and you're changing board policy anyway through the lawyer.
And some changes.
So do we, so the question here is, do we want a workshop in December?
Yes.
And what do we want to cover?
I think this is what we have to cover, evidently.
In December. Well, because there's, we already are here next Monday for Brian's evaluation. Then the next Monday is our next board meeting for November.
Yeah, I think we've missed our opportunity. I don't know if we'll be able to allocate in before the holidays.
I agree with that a thousand percent.
Because we have a lot of stuff coming up. I mean, you can throw out some ideas if you want to look, but I don't...
I think you look, it has to be an organizational type thing. You are, we have missed the opportunity. It's November.
Okay, we still can have one before our organizational meeting in January. Where's our first meeting in January, where is it?
Isn't that what we, isn't that what we said?
That's what I thought we were doing, that's where I was at, that was my thing. That before that organizational meeting, we were gonna have a meeting because we were talking about some of the roles of the president and whatever, and what you did. We were gonna look at our evaluation, evaluating the board. Those are two items that I remember discussing. So I'm asking the board right now, do you want to have one before our official organizational meeting? Yes or no?
I don't think it's doable.
I don't think it is either.
It's not doable.
Because then even if you want to do it before the organizational meeting, now you're talking about the first week of January, it's still the holidays and some school districts are still off, some school districts are back in session.
Okay, do you still, what, if that's, that seems feasible, do we do want to have it? When did we do it? Did we do it in January last year?
We didn't.
We did in January, is that what we'd like to do?
Angela, did we do it, was it that first Saturday in January?
Yeah, we did.
No, it was the second, it's in my calendar, it was January 14th.
It was after.
14th of the second Saturday.
Okay, is that what we would like? Yes or no? Do you want me to schedule it, get something going? Oh, sorry, Angel, I did hear you.
I'm okay with that. It'd be after the organizational meeting?
Yes, no?
Why wouldn't we do, why couldn't we just...
Hang on, Angel, I mean Sandy.
Why can't we cover all of this then at the organizational meeting? If we're gonna be waiting till after anyways, and rather than doing it before, why can't we just do it all?
Because we no longer do the organizational meeting just by itself. We do the organizational meeting and then we have our regular meeting.
Meeting right after it.
It used to be, you had your organizational meeting, you got all the stuff together. And then, the week later was the, was the board meeting, but that, that's changed.
We could, if you want, do the organizational meeting, which is the logistics. And then after that organizational meeting, not have a meeting. So when I do the, in the organizational meeting, I identify the second and fourth meeting for the, for your regular meeting. Not have one that first one and do a workshop after that organizational meeting. It's just, it's not a regular meeting, it's just a workshop after the organizational meeting. So once you pick your officers, once you identify the attorneys, the banks, et cetera, that takes you about a half hour, and then you just do a workshop.
The workshop would be, you're saying like 7:00 P.M.?
It would be at 7:00 P.M. And we, on our official meeting schedule, in January, we only have one meeting. That's one option either way.
Wait a second, so the workshop would be at 7:00 P.M.?
Yeah. The organizational, the organizational meeting is at 6:30. It chooses about a half hour, the organizational meeting.
Yeah, but the workshop last year was like 10 hours.
And it was, I'm sorry, but it wasn't 10 hours.
I'm exaggerating a little bit.
But quite frankly, if you work in the workshop, you're not doing it at 7:00 o'clock at night.
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
That Saturday that we did it, that was, that was good. You're there, you're fresh. If you truly want to do good work in that workshop, for God's sake, since 11:23, you know, think about it.
Yeah, and we would be debating maybe more if it was not this late.
Yeah.
Okay, so...
Yes, I agree with that.
So I will put out a date in January.
I think, didn't we just say?
The first Saturday after.
First Saturday, is that what we're doing? So the organizational meeting, 13th? January 13th, workshop. Okay, what do you want on it? We can look at this piece that we have in front of us.
I thought it worked out well, I don't know, you know, like, there was, didn't like a couple of people?
Angela and Margaret. Yeah, Angela and Margaret put it together.
Like, I don't know, it doesn't, same people, different people, I don't care. But like, I think it'd be best if somebody kind of puts it together, an agenda, I guess. And then we could maybe email them with things that we want to maybe discuss. Whoever is on that little committee or whatever.
Or do you, or let them know, I'm just thinking, I know right now a couple of things we need to have on it.
Oh, I gotcha.
You know, we need to talk about this.
I need to do a...
What's it called?
Board member evaluation.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's what it's on.
Self-evaluation.
We did hear that, they said that we should have somebody come in and do that for us.
Yes, that was something we wanted to talk about yesterday.
They're saying, so that there's no hurt feelings. That it would be an outside person to tell you like what your bias are or what you... So that you're not upset when Renee tells you what your bias are, or, you know, Margaret, you would be upset at the M A S B person and not even care.
I don't even know what that means.
Like, if somebody tells you or, you know, critiques you during our, whatever development, you're a certain, certain type of personality, because they'll do like evaluations. But you might be offended, though, if it was something you didn't particularly like about yourself. So if it comes from somebody you don't know, it wouldn't be so.
But how do you conduct self-evaluation well if you don't do it? The group that's here, we're the ones that have to figure out how to...
Right, right.
That's how I look at it. I don't need somebody coming in and telling me what my personality type is.
Yes, but are you gonna be able to sit there and pick apart your own flaws as well? And say, I'm doing this wrong, I'm doing that wrong. Sometimes it's hard to see within yourself.
On work that I do here at this board table, absolutely, I think...
So what format would we use for a self-evaluation?
Well, I'm gonna go back and say, let's make that part of whoever, the committee, or the, whoever wants to...
There would need to be an evaluation tool or something, right?
You can pull it off there. I may ask you that. But you can also get them to come in and...
All right, well, I'm gonna look and see what's...
Okay, is there anyone interested? I would gladly work on this, is there anyone else who would like to?
I will, I wouldn't mind.
Anybody else?
I'll help you ladies if you need to.
Okay. Okay, anybody else? We can't do it because then there would be four of us.
Right.
Okay, so I will work with Candace and Angela to get an agenda together of what we're gonna cover. I'll make sure we put it out so that if you have any suggestions that you would like to add to it or think we need to talk about and cover, and we will table this piece till that time.
Thank you for your work on that.
We've discussed it and so it'll be part of the workshop. Because this, we aren't voting on this, so you don't have to table it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next item on our agenda is raves. Danielle, do you have anybody?
I'm good.
Sandy?
Yeah, I just wanna, I'll try to be real quick about it because it's late, but I just wanted to really rave about the middle school, their Veterans Day celebration. I was able to go to that and it was really nice. And the middle school band and choir performed really, very, very well. I mean, I heard a lot, a lot of people saying really good things about the band and the choir and, and they were right. They were both really, really great, so, and the whole thing was, the whole celebration was great and everything. So thank you for the invitation and, you know, kudos to whoever put all that together. It's Ms. Plor and Ms. Shaq as well. And I also just, real quickly, wanted to say kudos to the wrestling team. I went to their fundraiser on Friday, it was a really good time. Thanks, I'm glad I got the invite. You know, it was a really cool way to like support them and everything. So I just thought that that was really great. And then lastly, real quickly, this Tammy and her team for, once again, making us look really good with our audit. I probably could do a few more, but I'm gonna stop there.
Thank you.
Next time.
Angel?
I'm all set, thank you.
I was just gonna shout out to the wrestling team, coach, the coaches and the parents and stuff that helped because it was a good time at the night of the races.
Cool. Candace?
Yes, same thing as Sandy. Thank you to Mrs. Morella for the invite for the Veterans Day Assembly. It really was tearjerker. I think there were a few tears in the room and thanks for the invite for that, it was wonderful. And Mrs. Shaq and Mrs. Plor did a great job orchestrating and organizing, singing and bands, you know, so that whole thing was great. And then to Tammy also, thank you, she's...
I dismiss her.
You'll have to tell her.
I did actually, because I just so happened to have our book from our meeting this weekend, compare these numbers to what they, they gave us the pie graph on the financials and it's like we're matching exactly to what they consider to be, you know, where we should be. So thank you, Mr. Womble, and really, good job with that, thank you.
Margaret?
Just to echo the Veterans Assembly, but for Ms. Morella to allow the group, the Colts of Valor to come in and do what they did for the veterans, it was an absolutely beautiful gesture and so thank you for her for approving them to come in and do that. It was amazing.
And I just want to, everybody's kind of hit mine, but Tammy, at least for the audit and all the, anybody who worked on the audit. I know that's a huge job. And again, we hear positive replies back from the auditors, so just want to thank them for all their hard work.
And then I did forget, I'm sorry, then. But I can't, I can't let another couple of weeks go by without mentioning, I just want to thank Cynthia and the whole team that worked on us having the Macomb County meeting here and us hosting it and, you know, all of the local businesses that helped us get things for giveaways and stuff like that. And I know that Cynthia did a lot of the work and so, thank you so much for all of that hard work. It was, it was done really nicely, I think it was awesome. And then the board members, whoever was on that committee to put it together, thank you.
I know, that's why I was like, I can't let another couple of weeks go by.
Okay, next item on our agenda is our superintendent and legislative update.
I'm gonna start with some district updates. I'd like to congratulate Nathan Guinea. He received his Eagle Scout. If you've been in front of the board office, he had to plan, raise money, design and implement all the landscaping, the tree was done as part of his Eagle Scout project. He did a remarkable job because he didn't, he had to truly accommodate and change his plan as he dug into the soil and saw more of the concrete left by the construction, et cetera. But I did get word that he was accepted for an Eagle Scout candidate, so congratulations to Nathan Guinea. Just as a board, I did notify the early childhood bargaining group that the district is looking into the GSRP to be moved to a five-day-a-week program rather than four-day. Many of our neighboring districts are doing that and for, we need at least consider it as a, to be competitive. I would like to congratulate the high school choir this weekend. They performed at the MSVMA State Musical Theater Solo Ensemble. They received several first division ratings and had almost a near-perfect score of 28 out of 30, so they were, did outstanding. I was not able to attend, so congratulations to Mrs. Plor and the high school students. I don't know if the board knows about this, but you do know that the governor signed legislation that any student four years old and older gets free breakfast and lunch. And as a district, again, I don't remember if I notified you, we opted to include three-years, three-year-olds in that process. So we are one of only just a few districts that truly feeds all of their students. And it dawned on me because this weekend I received an email from Ms. Gerard, the head cook at the elementary school. And her email simply said, I meant to email you a while back to say thank you for your decision that the school will pay for the meals for tuition-based preschool students, three-year-olds. It was a bad decision for the governor, legislators do not include three-year-olds in the every child gets to eat free in school, in her opinion, because three-year-olds are part of preschool. And it only goes for four and above. But she basically was thanking the district for including and not excluding that group. It's not a significant cost to the district, so we made the decision to go ahead and include all of our kids. And I know our families appreciate that. Legislative update, just a couple of things as they left for the session. They did approve the new retirement, so if you don't choose, it defaults to the hybrid. You have to choose out of that, which is the 401K plan, it's the opposite of what it was. Nothing major on that one. The one that I'll be honest, is concerning to me and many school districts is because we have no choice but to give this information. And I'm not saying it's in a bad way, but House Bill 169 was voted by 56 to 51. The bill requires public school employers to share personal information of new employees, which is their personal emails, addresses, phone, wages and other information with union bargaining. Again, I'm not opposed to the union having this. It's, I'm opposed to me giving this information without the employee authorizing me to give it to you. There was asked in several of this process that employee had to sign off or opt out, something like that. All those changes were not made to the law. And now it's going on to the governor for her consideration. So basically what that means is any new teachers, all that information is automatically given to the... given to the, to the union leadership. And again, I'm not opposed to them, I just think that person who I'm giving, should have the right to say yes or no whether their personal information is given. The legislature did adjourn for the year, which basically means on Tuesday, November 14th, was known as sign and die, which basically means at that point, since there's no longer doing anything, the 90-day clock goes into effect for any bills that didn't go into immediate effect. The legislators, um, part of it was the Democratic primary that was, they moved up, so they needed that legislation to go into effect, so that, um, they can hold that primary earlier than usual. Two House representatives, one mayoral seats, so now the House is split 54, 54, um, so there's not a majority. While the legislators officially come back in January, it's not expected that much will be done in the House until those special elections are held to bring back the House count back to 110. So we're not anticipating anything happening on the House floor until that's done, to see who's gonna have the majority in the House. Senate, though, will return to business as usual on January 10th, so nothing will be coming out of legislators from now till January, which can be a good thing, so.
Good?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, so, uh, let's see, items of interest from the board. We'll start on the opposite side. Margaret, do you have anything?
I'm good.
Uh, Danielle? Oops, I was doing it alphabetical, so let's not. Candace?
Um, no, I'm good. Thank you, Cynthia, for all your hard work in, um, preparing our, a weekend for the conference. Thank you.
Kelly? No. Me, no. Angela?
No, I'm all set, thank you.
Uh, Sandy?
No, I'm good, thanks.
And Danielle?
I'm good.
Okay. Okay, next item on our agenda is public comments. Since the last board meeting, I received the following emails from the public. I received an email from a parent regarding a book, asking if it was part of the high school curriculum. This email was forwarded to Mr. Womsley, who responded and provided an answer. The board and Mr. Womsley received another, another email regarding our special education teachers and their qualifications. Mr. Womsley arranged a meeting with the parent and our special education director. This parent also had questions on teacher retention and recruiting. With the assistance of Mr. Womsley, I responded back to that parent regarding our current retention and recruiting practices. The last email that I received was from a parent regarding the letter that I wrote that was sent to all parents and was placed on Facebook. This parent informed me that one sentence in my letter was false. I stated that myschooldata.org had not updated their reports with the 22, 23 school data. I take full responsibility in saying that I was partially wrong. Yes, some of the 22, 23 data, such as testing data, has been uploaded to reports, but other reports have not. For example, the school grade report will not have 22, 23 data loaded until November of this year. Since then, my letter has been taken down from the district website. Mr. Womsley and Mrs. Staples have placed, both on the website and Facebook, a presentation to show everyone regarding our testing scores. I personally want to say that I did not do this intentionally, nor lied to the families of this district to save face. I just made an error. We had no public comments at the last board meeting, so I have no responses. At this time, any member of the public may address the board. Please sign in and state your name. You will have three minutes to address the board. Are there any public comments? Being no public comments, we will move on to the next item on our agenda. Action item.
Ms. Shaw, can I, just for the board's reference?
Yes.
This is what she was referencing. If you clicked on this data, um, there are personalized messages from each school, and then it ties into the October 9th board presentation that they did. So, if you want to hear a message from Ms. Manguni, Ms. Morella, Ms. Sabo, again, each one ties into the board meeting, which is this last one, so.
Okay, next item on our agenda is our action items. I'm looking for a motion for the approval of resolution for just, for a reinstatement hearing or reinstatement student.
I motion that the following, oh, sorry, hold on. I'm sorry. I motion that the, um, board... Oh, wait, I'm sorry, I have the wrong one. I apologize. So I, I don't have that one in front of me, I have the wrong student.
I move that following a closed session student reinstatement hearing, the board votes to reinstate student 091123 consistent with the attached resolution.
Do I have support?
Support.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I vote aye. Motion carries. Looking for a motion for, again, a discipline?
I got this one.
Okay.
I motion that following a closed session student discipline hearing, the board voted to expel student 111323 consistent with the attached resolution.
Do I have support?
Support.
Either one.
Doesn't matter.
I made Kelly. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I vote aye. Motion carries. Last one, approval. Looking for a motion for the, uh, discipline of an employee.
I move that following a closed session employee discipline slash dismissal hearing, the board votes to terminate employee 111323 consistent with the attached resolution.
Do I have support?
Support.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Being no further business, the board will adjourn at 11:41.